And everyone, and welcome to the Monday, October 9th meeting of the Campbell County School Board. It's great to see everyone here tonight. I'd like to welcome a very special guest. Well, you're all special, and I'm glad you're here. But I have one special guest. I'd like to introduce my dad, Gene Epperson. He came after the third. Thanks for braving the cold, Dad. Come on. Okay, and a couple others here I wanted to mention, and we'll get to it in the agenda, but Mr. Markey, I believe we have your debate team with you. Thank you for bringing them here tonight. Looking forward to what they have to say. And Mr. Scott, you're out there somewhere. There you go. And you've got your political science class, correct?
Sir.
Great, great. Glad to have you here. At this moment, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get right to it. First item up on the agenda tonight, I've got a presentation by the Campbell County Educational Foundation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Stanley, and the Campbell County School Board, members of the Campbell County Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Rose Epperson, and I'm here representing the Campbell County Educational Foundation. This group of volunteers have been diligently working to provide financial assistance to our students to help them with their post-secondary pursuits. The Campbell County Educational Foundation Board includes Susan Brandt, Dean Farmer, Linda Grubba, Vicky Maddox, Brandon Tredway, Sam Vance, Amy Hale, and Clay Stanley. Accomplishments of this program continue to astound me. Established in 2017, after today, this foundation will have contributed $150,000. These programs prepare Campbell County students for post-secondary pursuits, reduce student loan debt, provide a skilled workforce to local employers, and ultimately contribute toward the betterment of our community. Achievements about this program to note: In 2022-23, 61 seniors from the four Campbell County high schools participated in the CBCC Regional CTE Academy, which is also known as the Dual Enrollment Program. Funding was provided for all students who wished to take part in the program. These students received an impressive 1,344 college credits. Students also received 27 industry credits. Also of special note is the recently formed Future Center at the AltaVista Combined School. It was established to help students set post-high school goals, creating a clear pathway for future success. Funds donated by the foundation provide additional items necessary to remove roadblocks to student success. This includes special events such as College and Career Days, Fast Foot Completion Nights, Transportation for College Trips, Resume Building, and Interview Workshops. Efforts are being made to make these services accessible to all students. With the success of AltaVista's Future Center, similar efforts are underway at the other high schools in the county. The support of this foundation continues to grow each year. Not only have we received numerous individual and corporate donations, but we've also received significant grant support from local foundations. The Campbell County School Board has made compelling use of these funds and has continued to be the area leader, sending more students to the CTE program than all other area schools. This is especially significant considering all of central Virginia is in dire need of educated individuals in the trades. Through this program, students are able to explore a variety of well-paying careers that are in high demand in our area. This foundation's support has continued to grow each year. Once again, we are increasing our donation level and have a check for $27,500 to present tonight, bringing our donation total to $150,000. We ask the Campbell County School Board to continue to work with our foundation as we all work together to encourage and prepare students in Campbell County public schools to become successful citizens in central Virginia. Thank you.
Is everybody?
Yeah.
Front of the table?
I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine. I'm gonna do the hallway. You want the hallway? Yeah. I'm gonna slip out for a picture real quick and come right back. Okay. I'm showing you now. Do you stay near him? Does that work? Okay. Yeah. No. It's fine. It's fine.[602.37]
Our science scores increased from last year, almost as high as the state. Our history scores came in at seventy percent like last year and higher than the state. And our writing scores came in much higher than last year at fifty-two percent, almost as high as the state. We're still continuing to work on writing. And let me remind you, our grade eight scores are what are shown there for the last two years, forty-four percent to fifty-two percent. For the last several years, we have now been implementing the end of course writing verified assessment portfolio, where students perform our complete evidence for the three years, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, in a portfolio that is then scored for verified credit. And so that data is not included in accreditation. So that is grade eight only at this point. But we have measures in place to continue writing improvement. Additionally, for this spring twenty-four, the VDOE has eliminated the grade eight SOL writing test as it stands. They are implementing the integrated reading and writing assessment in grades five, eight, and eleven. As they abbreviate it, the IRW is an additional but separate component to the reading SOL test, and it includes a nonfiction passage, either history or science content, with comprehension questions, and then a prompt that corresponds. So students will have context to write about what they have read. I'm excited about the potential of the shift of this test, since research shows us that students will be much more successful writers when reading and writing instruction are interconnected and assessed simultaneously. At this point, we do not have additional information as the way the assessment will be scored, or what data will become available to students and divisions. But as more information is provided, we will certainly provide you updates on that new assessment. So based on the data I have shared with you tonight, I'm happy to announce that all of our schools are fully accredited. Additional information can be found on the school quality profiles that have been released from the Virginia Department of Education. And at this time, Dr. Hale is now going to share with you our comprehensive plan updates.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson, for sharing our division data and accreditation details. I will now be providing you with an update in our comprehensive plan and how we are responding to our student data. As a reminder, the comprehensive plan was updated in 2022 and will be active through the 2027 school year. We remain committed to our mission statement that in Campbell County, we provide a world-class education that enables all students and every student to choose and pursue any post-K-12 endeavor. Additionally, we are focused on meeting the requirements of a profile of a Virginia graduate, including critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. With regard to curriculum and instruction, our first priority is to implement the profile of a Campbell County graduate and maintain full accreditation for all of our schools. As Ms. Robertson shared, all of our schools are fully accredited for the 23-24 school year. The first objective for this priority is to ensure mastery of unfinished learning and attain grade-level proficiency. We are continuing this work through our curriculum work from last school year through this summer and also during this school year. Our curriculum teams have worked on literacy and math at the elementary level, and also on math and science at the secondary level. And these are some images from the summer work that was held. In elementary English, this curriculum work was concentrated on the science of reading, particularly with the implementation of a new literacy program, and the selection this school year of a comprehension program, as Mrs. Walsh shared at the last school board meeting. At the secondary level, we have been focused on middle school writing and preparing for new standards that we anticipate for next school year. For math, both elementary and secondary have been preparing for new standards. They have also been working to update our pacing documents. Some of the most work we have done has been in our science classes and in our science curriculum. For fourth and fifth grade, this has been in-class supports that had been provided. And we have also added a transitional science course that blends sixth and seventh grade for our middle school students, because we know that there are gaps that they have in science from being in elementary school and the focus being heavily on reading as needed and math. We are also moving away from Earth Science at the middle school level, because students have a variety of opportunities to earn that type of credit at the high school level. And we have created curriculum storyboards and common experiences for that. So this is an example of what one science storyboard might look like. And you will notice that there's student-friendly language. And so one of the units for Earth and its systems is called "To Infinity and Beyond." So this really shows this shift to telling a story in science. Finally, there has been quite a bit of work to support college civic and career readiness. We have expanded elective offerings, and we have also implemented School Links as our college and career readiness platform. Ashley Wilson is our work-based learning coordinator. She's based here at the Campbell County Technical Center. She has created updated training for our work-based learning students and continues to support our CTE Academy students. A major positive for us as a division is that we met the college and career readiness index at all of our high schools with the highest possible performance. Our next steps will be to update our academic and career plans for our middle school students. Our second objective with curriculum instruction is to ensure that students attain the knowledge and competitive workplace skills required to meet the CCPS, profile the graduate, and prepare for post-secondary citizenship. At the secondary level, students explore different careers starting in our middle schools. We also have college and career coaching at each of our high schools. And in high school, students have multiple regional opportunities available to them, including the Central Virginia Governor's School, the CTE Academy or dual enrollment, which we have one hundred and fourteen students enrolled in right now, the early college program, and the STEM Academy. Additionally, we have a robust CTE program here at the Campbell County Technical Center. And two of the main community events that are held here include our College and Career Day, held in the spring, and also the CTE Signing Day. And students actually did receive raises at this event. So not just jobs, but actually raises. Our last objective with regard to curriculum and instruction is to provide professional development that will equip our staff with the knowledge and skills to ensure student success. We have partnered with Longwood University to provide training for English language learners, and this is through their EL Boot Camp. We have also used letters as training for reading intervention with our elementary, EL, and teachers who teach special education. A major commitment to professional learning are the professional development days we have built into the school calendar. We had our first one this school year on September 29th and have our next one scheduled for November 6. As shared at an earlier board meeting, we also have our Teacher Learning Academy, and that is held in June. This was in June of 2023, and we had over three hundred and eighty participants. And our teachers truly enjoyed being able to learn from each other. The next focus area in our comprehensive plan is student support and providing high-quality, effective learning environments for all of our students. With our school-based mental health grant, we have a unique relationship with Harvest and have been able to provide needed mental health services to our students. We have also had professional development and meetings with our school counselors, since they play such a critical role in our buildings. Our student support specialists also work with our schools to connect families with needed resources, and our elementary behavior coach has helped work with school staff to problem-solve student behavior issues. This year, we transitioned to the standard response protocol and had division safety training to focus on a common language. School safety and our relationship with our school resource officers continues to be a top priority for the division. The third focus area in our comprehensive plan is human resources. Our priority is to encourage and support the recruitment, development, and retention of well-prepared and skilled teachers and leaders. We hosted a job fair, career fair, in February of 2023, and Mrs. Hunley and her staff did a great job with the event. We also have two mentor coordinators who led our new teacher week, our cruise into success, and work with our new teachers throughout the school year. This year, we started an aspiring administrators academy for our current teachers and assistant principals. They meet each month and cover a variety of topics and will complete a capstone project at the end of their program. We see the growing need for developing leadership in our division and are committed to growing our own. Our fourth focus area in our comprehensive plan is school operations. Campbell County Public Schools recognizes that the administrative procedures used to effectively operate a school system may impact the learning environment and opportunities for students and staff. Therefore, we work to enhance current practices and seek alternative and creative means to meet the needs of each student in Campbell County. And one of our greatest celebrations has been the opening of Russburg Middle School. This is students as they got their first peek at the middle school as they came through the doors. Students and teachers have enjoyed the new building, and we will have an official ribbon-cutting ceremony on November 4 at 2:00 P. M. It will begin with ribbon-cutting from 2:00 to 2:30, and then an open house from 2:30 to 5:00 for the community to come and visit the school. We are very excited, and please save the date. We hope to see you all there. We continue to work on our capital improvements, and our next major project will be the Brookville High School project. Lastly, with our comprehensive plan, we do have an update regarding technology and debt technology security. We have an updated visitor management system through Raptor. We are currently working on updating our network system and have also updated our filtering system with a new program called Securely. Additionally, the technology department has supported STEM instruction through the NASA Plan Experience, you can see here, the use of OzBots and B-bots in the elementary school, and basically they're just little robots is the best way to describe them, as well as 3D pens. Each secondary school has class VR sets, so these are virtual reality headsets that can be used for instruction. And the STEM classes in our middle schools now have drones to use for instructional experiences. So lots of fun technology. Lastly, the technology department has supported digital citizenship in our schools. October is Digital Citizenship Month, and students will be provided with lessons on technology literacy and digital citizenship through Common Sense Media. The technology department has also supported the elementary literacy plan with Lexia Core 5 and Dibbels Assessments. And another major support of the technology department has been the implementation of School Links, our college and career readiness platform. As you can see, we celebrate the growth and achievement of our students and staff and are working to continue the work of our comprehensive plan. The last piece that I wanted to share with you all is an updated organizational chart that I did email today, and it does have listed, we have had transition over the years. We wanted you to have a clear view of who we are and what we do, but also to see our elementary principals and secondary principals. As you click here, you can navigate along, and then if you want to see everyone who works for our department, you go to the menu, and then you can actually click on each team, and they are listed. All right. So thank you for allowing me to update you on our comprehensive plan, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
The EL training with Longwood, how was that done?
It's a course that they take. And so the principals typically nominate and select a teacher that they think would really support that, and then they go through the tuition assistance process, and then they're able to take that course.
Do they actually go to Longwood?
It's mostly virtually, which is a positive, mostly held virtually, but the teachers have really enjoyed it that have completed it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
How many teachers did it?
I'd have to go back to the exact number, but it's been at least, I want to say ten to fifteen, but I will get that actual number for you.
The last couple of years.
Over, yes. And it's not just one time, because it's been over time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, I was right. About ten each year, yes.
Dr. Hale, could you share or give us an update on our, we've talked about this before, our postgraduate tracking and how we're going to do that and then how we're going to use it?
Absolutely. So last year, part of, one of the main reasons why we wanted to use School Links was to track our alumni and have a process to do so. And so what we are doing now is, as students exit and leave us in Campbell County as seniors, they will actually update their information to include an email address where we can reach them. So then we can see where they are at the end of so many years. So we are in the process of getting that developed, so that way we can see where are you one year after high school, where are you five years after high school, and be able to report on that. We do know from our seniors that we had about sixty percent who were planning to attend college or university, and then we had a good chunk of twenty-five, possibly more if you included some of the trade schools who were going into the workforce. So we really want to see, does it match kind of what you said? So that is part of what we're working on with School Links. It's also used for all of their college applications and scholarships. So we're pleased with it. It's not one hundred percent perfect yet, but we are working through that and are excited with those capabilities. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
That's great. Thank you for all you do there. It's encouraging to see our numbers starting to come up a little after the pandemic and seeing things improve. So good luck and thanks for everything.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. At this time, the board will hear matters from the floor. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Prior to speaking, please state your name and address. Comments must be directed to the board and not to the staff, the audience, or the media. So I believe first up, we have Mr. Markey's class. And first speaker we have there is Madeline Poling.
Would you like me to state my name and address?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Madeline Poling. I live at 170 Cooper Way. Chairman Epperson, Dr. Stanley, and members of the board, good evening. I'm here to address the board over the issuance of high school credit to early college students. Firstly, I'll introduce myself. My name is Madeline Poling. I live in the Sunburst District, and I'm a senior at Brookville High School, enrolled in Campbell County's Early College Program. For those of you who may be unfamiliar, Early College is a two-year program that allows students the ability to earn an associate's from CVCC while receiving a high school diploma. You earn sixty-five college credit hours in total, but only ten high school credits. When compared with similarly rigorous courses in dual enrollment opportunities, early college students complete similar work yet receive less credit. I discovered this when discussing class rank with some of my friends who attend the Central Virginia Governor's School, a similarly rigorous program. Gov. School students take three-year-long courses and achieve any other graduation requirements typically through AP credits at their home school, usually one or two per semester. In contrast, early college students take five classes per semester, ten classes per year to their six. Now, my friends and I love competition and determined that if I kept my grades up, I may surpass my gov. School friends in class rank. So I worked hard and made all A's, only to discover I went down in ranking. After much effort to figure out how this could be, I found the answer. Every early college class was awarded half of one high school credit. In contrast, gov. School students received one credit per AP class they take and half a credit per each semester of a year-long class, averaging one credit per one class. When calculating GPA, their GPA was higher even though I took more courses. To illustrate this, I've provided a sample schedule for both programs detailing credits earned. I've also included requirements for application and entry to show comparability. I will concede that some early college courses are similar enough that it may be reasonable to count two courses as a year-long class, for example, Bio 101 and Bio 102. However, other courses such as public speaking and computer applications aren't congruent to each other, so why are they being weighed as one class? I'd also like to address a potential counterpoint you may be asking. Well, if each semester a student receives half a credit per class through either program, and it's only the AP classes receiving a full credit, what's the issue? I'll address this by saying year-long courses are awarded half a credit per semester, and the courses early college students take are not year-long courses, so why are they being weighed as such? Secondly, if an AP class is supposed to be comparable to a college course and will earn you one high school credit, certainly an actual college course should also be worth one credit, not half. To conclude, I would urge the board to support my belief that due credit should be given where credit is due and address this issue. Now, with my remaining time, I'd like to thank the board for the funding the county provides to allow students like me to attend these programs, and thank the people here for the donation that was mentioned here tonight to allow them to continue. I can personally speak to the fact that dual enrollment opens up a world of opportunities to students like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Okay, T.J. Kaiser?
My name is Thomas T.J. Kaiser. I live at 1-800-RAINBOFORREST-DRIVE. Chairman Epperson, Dr. Stanley, and members of the board, good evening. First, I would like to thank everyone on the board for allowing myself, as well as my debate team, to speak today, as well for my coach for pushing me to be here today to talk about a very important topic to me. My name is Thomas Kaiser. I'm a senior at Brookville High School and from the Timberlake District. And today, I would like to propose the creation of a junior reserve officer training corps, or a JROTC in Campbell County high schools. For those unfamiliar with what a JROTC does, its purpose is to prepare high school students for leadership roles, military or otherwise, as well as instilling discipline and teamwork while making them aware of their rights, responsibilities, and privileges as American citizens. I myself have joined the Navy and wished I had a program available to help advance my service. Aside from advancement due to my chosen job, if I had been able to have two years of JROTC experience, I would have been able to start at one rank higher than I am now, and had I had three to four, I would have been capable of starting at three ranks higher. Allowing a classroom space at the tech center, for example, or as an elective or club in our schools would give students planning to serve an advantageous position to start at a higher rank, and allows others to gain better morals and have a more positive mindset on ideals such as teamwork that are vital in today's job culture and something that looks valuable on a transcript. Another reason we should implement a JROTC is that other school systems around Campbell County, such as Bedford County and Lynchburg City, both have JROTC programs, with Heritage having the Marines, GLAS having the Air Force and the Army, and Bedford County having all three at their own technical center. If they can do it, why can't we? As a county, we should strive to have as many opportunities available for our students, and a JROTC is a great way to give students an opportunity to better themselves throughout our county. And this isn't just one student deciding to walk a different path. In Brookville alone, fifty-three have joined the military out of high school in the past five years, and in the county, that number is one hundred and thirty-nine immediately after graduation. With those numbers not including students joining afterwards, it's safe to say that there is a need for a JROTC program. Having an avenue for all students to advance their career, or just to have a positive role model and long-lasting friendship in their life, so that they can learn vital soft skills for college and beyond, is something that should be implemented in all Campbell County schools. This also opens the avenue for the bearing of colors at school-wide games or the creation of an SGA in our schools, which again looks excellent on a transcript. Because of this, I urge all on the board to open the door with the possibility of a JROTC program and start a discussion with myself or recruiter so that such opportunities can be available to your students. Thank you very much.
Jacob Cantrell.
Hi, my name is Jacob Cantrell. I live in the Timberlake District, and today I would like to speak to you about graduation ceremonies. It is a required rule at all Campbell County schools that students obtain a cap and gown for graduation before they walk out on stage and receive their diploma. Students can generally purchase these caps and gowns for roughly thirty dollars from Herf Jones or Johnston's, or they can be provided them for free if they are a low-income student. While the county is willing to provide for students financially, I would like to challenge the ethics of requiring students to pay for caps and gowns in the first place. Students work for years to earn the right to graduate, and I don't believe it is fair that they should get to the end of all that hard work and be paywalled out of the ceremony. Why should students even put the effort into high school if they're going to be charged at the end of all that work? To solve this problem, I would like to propose buying a bulk amount of caps and gowns to keep in stock for graduating students, provided they return the caps and gowns after the graduations ceremony. Students can still order custom caps and gowns from services for a fee, but students who do not wish to pay or can't pay will have those provided to them and rented to them. As a way of doing this, students could walk up on stage and receive their graduation diploma case as opposed to their degree, and then receive their degree afterwards if they have turned in the cap and gown undamaged. This provides the county with a unique form of economic stability. Should the economy fall on hard times and the companies we buy from may not be inclined to provide us with free caps and gowns for low-income families, we would still be able to provide for those families with a bulk amount of caps and gowns. I estimate it would cost an upfront fee of roughly twenty thousand dollars to make this initial purchase. With the upcoming renovation of Brookville High School and untapped storage potential in facilities near Russburg and William Campbell High School, I believe there is more than enough opportunity to make space for the sudden influx of caps and gowns that we need to store. Taking care of these caps and gowns through laundering and care could be made into a service opportunity. Juniors in NHS or Key Club could take the caps and gowns at the end of the graduation ceremony and launder them and iron them out themselves for storage, negating the cost year by year that it would take to maintain the quality of the caps and gowns we store. With this in mind, given the numerous financial, educational, and ethical benefits to buying a stock reserve of caps and gowns, I encourage the board to consider the opportunity in their future budgetary matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Next up will be Mr. Markey.
They're good, huh? All right. Good evening, Chairman Epperson, Dr. Stanley, members of the board. My name is Bobby Markey, and I live at 304 Woodhaven Drive in the Timberlake District. I've been a math teacher at Brookville High School for thirteen years. First, I would like to thank the Brookville High School debate team seniors for coming to speak with you tonight about their concerns. We do have one right after me as well. I do also want to mention, TJ is our current state champion right now, so we are very happy that he's here as well. As their coach, I thoroughly enjoy this start to the season where they practice speech writing and public speaking by choosing the topics that they're passionate about and talking with you about their concerns. Well, as a good coach, if I'm going to talk the talk, then I'm going to walk the walk. So here I am to talk with you about my concern, which is the new math SOLs. As you are hopefully aware, the VDOE approved the 2023 math SOL standards on August 31. While their ratification was not unexpected, the full implementation of these new standards was moved up, giving us one full year less time to review and revise our curriculum in Campbell County. Please note that Dr. Hale's team, especially our math specialist Susan Stanberry, has been hard at working with curriculum teams and teachers individually to ensure that we manage this transition to the new standards seamlessly, and our high level of achievement in math continues across the county. My bigger concern, however, is our high school program of studies. The new math standards have a strong focus on data analysis and students being able to complete at all levels a data cycle of collection, analysis, and inference. This is a fundamental shift in the math community from the calculus track mindset that has been around for the past one hundred years. According to the American Statistical Association, over sixty percent of college majors require at least one statistics course, whereas only twenty percent require a calculus course, and high school calculus credits are only taken into account at colleges if the student is majoring in a STEM field. And what about those that are not planning on going to college? Sorry, I don't have a source for that, but I'm pretty sure they're more likely to use statistics than they are calculus. So if we are to truly follow the CCPS mission of preparing every student for any post-K-12 endeavor, it is time to reevaluate our program of studies in Campbell County to include math courses that support this shift into more statistical analysis rather than the road to calculus. The CCPS high school program of studies currently only includes two courses that directly teach statistics, AFDA and AP Statistics, both of which I've been teaching for at least eight years, Statistics almost thirteen years now. We should be looking into two new courses that will be added to the Statistics Track, Data Science and Intro to Probability and Statistics. These courses are designed to give students hands-on and real-world applications of statistics that can be used in their daily lives and to better understand data being provided for them in the media and how best to interpret it. Thanks to technologies like AI, we need to move our focus more to analysis and interpretation rather than blind calculation of equations without context. I look forward to continuing this conversation with you all over the next few months, as we continue to make Campbell County the best place for students to learn. the best place for students to learn, grow, and become the next great citizens of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markey. Okay, and next up will be Dayton Fox.
Chairman Emerson, Dr. Stanley, members of the board. My name is Dayton Fox. I'm a high school senior who lives in 16052 Leesville Road, Evington, in the Sunburst District. I'd like to start my speech tonight by admitting that I fall asleep a lot in class. However, it is not entirely my fault. Most teachers keep the lights off in their classrooms, only illuminating the room with LED strings, lights, lamps, and promethium boards. This is because the current fluorescent lights in the school are too bright. Students with sensory issues struggle to focus on them as well as many who don't get enough sleep the previous night. Also, fluorescent bulbs flash at 10 times per second, making them twice as likely to cause headaches in students. I personally know students who have had to skip school due to having migraines and avoiding them from getting worse from the lights in the building. So what is my request from you all for this? When the reservations at Brookville High School happened, I suggest the county adds dimmer systems to the lights in all classrooms, allowing teachers to find the perfect balance of brightness for their students. Dimmable bulbs cost about the same as regular, depending on seller. And this also will help students to be able to adjust the brightness on their computers that we have to look at for most of the day. While you are looking at the changes of lights, I would also recommend thinking about what other changes can be made within the classroom spaces to allow students to focus more on teachers' lessons versus other sensory factors. Giving teachers the ability to change the temperature in the classrooms, for example, adding noise-canceling boards on the walls to soak up sound and stop echoing in the room, having windows with the future to be frosted, the students can not see the outside, but admin can see the inside. These would just be a few ways that would help students like me learn in an environment that is comfortable and distraction-free.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Dayton. Okay, very good. All right, next up is Jackie Mendez.
Well, good evening. Good evening, board. My name is Jackie Mendez. I live in Evington, Virginia, here tonight to talk to you about parents' rights in education and Campbell Kids. November is upon us in a few short weeks. There are 29 days before the election and that we will represent the county in the next four years. So we are asking the Campbell County School Board to endorse and implement this proclamation that I will read. "In recognition of vital importance for education, excellence, and meaningful collaboration between the school district and families, we recognize November as Parents' Rights in Education Month. Whereas we acknowledge parents are a child's first and foremost educator and have the primary responsibility for the education, care, and training of their children; and whereas education is comprised of a range of activities by which families and communities teach knowledge and skills, including ethical and behavioral norms and traditions; and whereas fairness and equality must be afforded to all students and families in the school district; and whereas public schools need cooperation and support of all parents; and whereas the parent-child relationship shall be honored and supported by teachers, counselors, administrators, and school board members." So therefore, we declare November Parents' Rights in Education Month, affirming that the constitutional rights of parents to direct the education and upbringing of their children. And so I will be emailing this proclamation to all the board members, as well as Dr. Stanley. And we're hoping to continue to work collaboratively in a very transparent way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Next up will be Ms. Crystal Coleman.
Before you start the clock, can I just say that tonight has been the first time since I retired in June of 2021 that I really missed being in the classroom, listening to all these students tonight. So thank you, as I turn to you and not to them. Okay, let's start the clock now. Good evening, I am Crystal Coleman from Alta Vista. My topic tonight centers on one word: courage. And in a minute, I will connect the dots to that. Prior to speaking, I handed Dr. Stanley a packet of information. He is the only one who received this information tonight because the last time I handed each of you information, one of you pushed it back at me with the words, "We said we aren't doing this here," to which I politely replied, as I returned it to that person, "You don't really know what it is." Then we have someone on the board who has a thing about drawing a red line in the sand. Next, we have someone who just recently shared with the public their concern over news media vans outside of school board meetings. And lastly, we have someone who always says, "Nothing to see here." The information I gave to Dr. Stanley focuses on the nightmare of trafficking and the constant insipid danger that our children face, not only with that, but with the social contagion of gender ideology and the theft of their childhood and their innocence. At the very least, this information should be incorporated into very serious professional development for our teachers and a definitive and clear expectation from this school board of what will not be tolerated and what protections will be put into practice and policy to ensure this. In addition, we are constantly hearing from school personnel how vitally important parents are to everything that happens within a school system. Well, this is a perfect opportunity to put that into action. Widely publicize and set up parental sessions to share this information and to strategize just how to help parents protect their children. This is not going away. It is only becoming a stronger attack on our children. You cannot turn a blind eye. You cannot say nothing to see here or not in my county. Appomattox County is at this very moment dealing with a massive lawsuit over just such issues, and they are only a stone's throw away. Roanoke College has its own mess because it did not stand up with its female athletes when they had the courage to say no to what was wrong. Which leads me right back to my topic word courage. Will you have the courage needed to take on this mess proactively, to do what's needed so that none of our children become victims? Or will you stand on the other side of that red line, close the shades so you can't see the news vans, profess that you know what it is when you don't, or put on the "nothing to see here" hat? There is so much that Campbell County has to offer each student in their journey, but if they get lost along the way, then what? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Next up is approval of the September 11th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the September 11th, 2023.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Phillips. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman. All those abstained, if there wasn't here.
Oh, motion carries. Did you note that Mr. Maddox was not here until last minute? Thank you. Payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the bills for last month and moved to approve payment.
Second. Got a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of donations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have four donations that were listed in advance of the meeting on board docs. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Jones. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of non-resident tuition. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have 14 applicants being considered for approval as non-resident tuition students. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Parker and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of school activity fund audit. Ms. McClanahan.
You have provided a copy of the annual audit conducted on the local school activity funds by Brown Edwards &amp; Company. The findings were standard, the normal ones that, you know, typical things we find in the schools. We actually had an increase in the number of schools with no findings. There were four this year, so kudos to them. And unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve the report as presented.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Phillips. Do we have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, the gist of the report is good, is that correct?
Yes.
In the conclusion where they talk about comments on internal control, where there were some disparities. From what I could determine, they're mainly like oversights, not indicative of any type of malfeasance. Sorry, hang on. But do we have training? Or how do we address these when these things do come up? How do we address? Because there's a lot of moving parts here, right? All these clubs and organizations that are all. So I'm just curious how we address this.
Well, after the audit, each school principal receives a report of their findings, and they have to present a corrective action plan to us on how they will move forward to help prevent these findings from reoccurring in the future.
Okay.
So how long does the audit process go?
They're here for a week.
For a week? And it's how many usually?
It's usually three to four auditors. And they spend a day at each high school and a half a day at each elementary or middle school.
Okay.
Can I also say that even in our last principals' meeting, Ms. McClanahan came and just kind of went over Finance 101 with everybody. Just provides good reminders for everybody. But then when we have these audits, they do have their own individualized reports that they need to go back and look at and answer to.
Okay. Good, good.
Good. Okay, again, we had a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Phillips. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report. Ms. Hunt.
Can I start unrelated and just say kudos to these kiddos? I had a few of them at Leesville Road, and that just makes me proud and I'm impressed. Dayton falling asleep, though, we might. But I like the dimmer lights. I like that idea.
Okay, you guys have, Mr. Chairman, thank you, the personnel report in front of you. I did want to mention that, I think I spoke too soon at the last meeting. We didn't have as many openings. But since last month, we did have four teacher resignations for various reasons, personal reasons and such. But we've already filled three of them, and the other one is in the works. It should be filled by the end of this week. And then I also wanted to mention to you, I thought this was noteworthy. Tracy works with classified staff with me, and I had her check behind me today because I just thought I was wrong. Because usually, the classified staff vacancy chart has a lot more openings. And right now, we have eight classified openings across the county. That's really impressive. And actually, I spoke to principals today where I believe that that is also going to be dwiddled down to about six by the end of this week, as long as those positions get filled as we're thinking. So I just wanted to mention that to you. It's noteworthy. I can't remember the last time that number was that low. That's just a different population. That's a little bit more of a revolving door. So it speaks to our admin working hard to fill those positions and then just another group of employees that we're working to retain. So I thought you'd like to know that information.
Cool.
So unless you have any other questions, I'd ask that you approve the personnel report as written.
How'd you get Ms. Mullin Camp to come back to Castle Road?
Great, right? Yes, I saw her. She came to our office today to do all of her paperwork, and she is really excited to come back home, is what she said. Yeah, we're excited to have her.
Great.
Amherst is probably not happy with us. It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the personnel report.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Maddox seconded that, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consideration of release from compulsory attendance. Mr. Sisk.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Tonight, I have one request for removal from compulsory attendance. If there are no questions, I ask that you approve this.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Brandt. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Report of the superintendent. Art Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the phrase "kudos to the kiddos." You all were fantastic tonight. I'm very proud of you. And certainly, what you talked about, what you spoke about is certainly worth consideration. And I appreciate you being here and having the courage to speak up. For our board, if you remember last month, we talked about how the General Assembly passed a new budget to include money for tutoring, to include money for implementation of the Literacy Act, and it included money for addressing absenteeism. Our staff has been working hard for the last three weeks to put together a spending plan. The challenge with this plan is it's all taking place after school has started, and we've already got things underway and feel really good about the things that we have in place. So we're trying to come up with things that are going to be meaningful and not overwhelming for our staff. So hopefully, we'll have a plan in place here in the next couple of weeks. But something I just wanted you to know that we've really been working on for the last three weeks. We've still not received a CALP tool, which is something we get from the state that pretty much helps us calculate our budget. So I don't have any official budget amendments for you tonight. Hopefully, we will get that in the next few days, and I will have an amended budget for you in November. However, we are planning on doing a 2% raise for all employees beginning January 1st. So that's something we feel really good about. And we've also had an opportunity in the last month to look at our health insurance cost and even though they are going to increase, we feel comfortable saying that we can cover that with the budget that we put in play last year. So we will not be passing along additional costs to our employees. So that's two wins there for all of our classified and certified employees who we feel good about. In terms of construction, if you've gone by Rusford Middle in the last few days, you see lights going up on the light field, on the ball fields. You see the extension of a parking lot, lines in the parking lot. What they were working on today was a new entrance out on the Village Highway. So got to be careful going through Rusford now, a lot of cones. But they assure me that that'll be cleaned up here in the next two weeks. By the end of this week, they should have sown grass and then start the landscape plant. So that is coming together. And as Amy said in her presentation, November 4th is when we'd like to host a ribbon cutting and open house for our community. And we're certainly excited about opening that up for everybody. In terms of Brookville High School, that's been a little slower moving. If you read the paper, you saw that the Board of Supervisors did approve an interim contract for Blair Construction. That's to help them with costs that they've incurred while doing some initial planning. And we look to have a comprehensive agreement in place by the beginning of the new year. So that's kind of where we are. Thank you to our staff tonight for everything that they did. Sarah, Amy, thank you. And Elizabeth, thank you.
Are we still on track for like January, assuming everything comes together for the new, for the construction to begin?
To begin, start working on the new gym.
Okay.
Correct.
Cool. Great.
Clay, the concrete, it wasn't right elevation. Is that being replaced or?
Correct.
Now where was that located?
End of last week, it's right there with the entrance that they're working on. It's going to be the main entrance going into the new school. And some reason, the elevation was off on one side. So in the last week, they tore out all the curtain gutter that they had laid and they're in the process now redoing that.
That's on their dime.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
That's on their dime.
Okay. Did all you have, Dr. Stanley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Let's, matters from the board. Mr. Jones.
I brought this booklet back again tonight because we kind of breezed through it last month. But there's some awful good news in there for the Campbell County taxpayers because it's a huge amount of savings on the Brookville project. I mean, it's about as good as it can get. I mean, people need to see that because it's a huge savings for the Campbell County citizens for the Brookville High School. If anybody wants to see it, they're free to read it. But there's a huge amount of money savings on the Brookville High School project because of Dr. Stanley and the Davinports', you know, work to secure the literary loan and secure that big, I mean, the grant and then the loan for two percent. I mean, that's just, that's like unheard of, so thank y'all for doing that. Dr. Anella says, "At Concord, we had a parent-teacher conference last Thursday as well as down on the farm day for Virginia Farm to School Week. This week, we're kicking off our coins for caring drive for the Valor Farms and have set out a goal to raise $2,000. And at the end of the month, we're looking forward to hosting our second annual trunk-or-treat and touch-a-truck family engagement night on Friday, October 27th from 5:30 to 7:30." And then she said, she almost forgot, but I think all of you all probably saw it. Concord Elementary School was named the best public school in the Reader's Choice category for the news in advance with Brookville. Come here second.
I think he's looking down the table at us.
Hi, buddy. So also, I had a pleasure to sit down with a new elementary school teacher, not at Concord, but at another school. And she was just enthusiastic and just overjoyed with her associate with Campbell County Schools. She was, she came to us from an adjoining division and she said in her whole, I think, 15-year career there, she had never, ever felt the support, the caring and enthusiasm from anybody in that other division. She says from the very first day, Teacher Learning Academy, the new teacher orientation, she said, "Everybody's been helpful, happy and just glad to, you know, lend an assisting hand." And she said even the parents have been unbelievable with their support, you know, financially and just doing anything just to help her. And her husband said this, he said, "After 15 years, she's coming home happy." So whatever y'all are doing, keep it up. Campbell County Education Foundation, thank you so much again. I mean, we appreciate it so much. Constitution Day was quite a bit going on at all the schools that I went to. It was a great, it was a great event. All schools accredited, that means a lot as far as I, you know, what I know about it, so. Organizational chart, thank you so much. I've been wanting that for so long to have pictures of the administrators at schools I don't frequent because they know who I am, but I got no clue who they are. So thank you so much for putting that together. Mr. Marky's debate class. Two questions to ask. Mr. Kaiser, state champion in what?
That would be policy debate.
What is that, what is, how did you, how did you achieve that title? What did you do?
Um, should I, should I?
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up here. I mean, you're a state champion.
Policy's a two-on-two, man. I gotta tag your partner who graduated, I'll tag him. You're good.
What?
Go ahead. You start, I'll fill in.
So, policy debate is a two-person debate style and it focuses on the real big topics. My topic last year was, actually, I forgot what it was.
Like I said, tag, tag in the partner.
It was about, it was about whether or not NATO should incorporate, we should, the United States should still work with with the North Atlantic Treaty Organization in the following categories of cybersecurity, biotechnology, or AI intelligence. And I, I went through the realm of cybersecurity through a certain type of computer called a quantum computer capable of working at anywhere from 1,000 times more efficient than an average computer to up to 10 million times more efficient, depending on what is used and what country of origin. And I had a, and I had, I was the top of both regionals, super regionals, and I only lost one in the entire, only one debate in the entire season. Out of, I believe, 15 debates.
So you know what the topics are or they just grab them out of, you previously, I mean, you know?
Yeah, it is a, it's a year-long topic. They pick it.
Okay.
They pick it pretty much the second that nationals ends. And then you're given the entire year to figure that out.
And that's unique to the policy debate style. Policy debate is handily the hardest debate style of all of them. We're proud that in the last four years, we've had three state champions in that category at Brookville alone. Here, Vias, I want to mention, was TJ's partner, he's currently at Virginia Tech now. But yeah, so they only lost one debate all season last year and so we were really happy there. We're trying to get him a partner for this year so we can defend that title. But the other types of debate are Lincoln Douglas, which is kind of your presidential style, public forum, which is kind of what we call the debate of the people, and then student congress. And so actually, what's been fun is a lot of what you all do and procedural with motions and things like that. We do exactly the same thing where we present bills and things like a House of Representatives. And so we actually have a former state competitor, Ian Keane, who graduated a couple of years ago here. And then Dayton is actually new to our debate team this year and he's actually going to take on the student congress this year. So it's really fun. It's only four styles of debate, but they're all very unique styles. But we're really happy to have a team here. And AltaVista also does have a team. We're trying to build a team at Rusford right now. So, you know, talk to the teachers there so we can get a program going at Rusford as well. But Brookville and AltaVista both have programs that are going pretty strong right now, so.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Hannah.
So. Mr. Fox, you made a comment that you wanted the windows to be where you could not see out. I think that's what you said.
Yeah. Okay, well, that was Mr. Marky's idea.
Hold on, hold on.
Not entirely, not entirely.
So the conversation we were.
Let me say why I ask this question, because the new windows in the Rusford Middle School are designed where you can see out, but for safety reasons, you can't see in. And that goes exactly opposite of what is?
So we were talking, we were actually talking about in that in terms of the internal windows, not the external. So thinking about it from the perspective of, I know that there exist, I know Lowe's has them, but I don't know where else they exist, where you can actually take windows that are currently, you can see both ways and like flip a switch to where they become frosted, to where you can't see out or in anymore. That's kind of what that conversation was about. We weren't talking about the external windows, we were talking about more the internal windows. So that way the students can't see out in the hallway and be distracted by others going around. Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's like a, I would like to think of it like a really, really like famous rapper's car or something like that.
Yeah, pretty much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that's all I got. I got a world of notes, but David's got like a novel written over here. I don't know what you're gonna get out of him, but that's all I got.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, won't take up quite so much time.
You know, remember he said last week that Yellow Branch sign would be better than Rusford's? I mean, better than Concord's? It's a new sign and it looks very, very nice. I saw it tonight, it's very nice.
Tonight you cut down Brookville.
I was just coming, so. Now, thanks for the outstanding donation by the Campbell County Educational Foundation. Great efforts there, so appreciate everybody's hard work on that. Thanks to Ms. Knowles for your efforts on Constitution Day. Great presentation, thanks for bringing that to us tonight. And Ms. Robertson and Ms. Hale, thank you guys for your presentations tonight. On S O L test scores, some good news there as well as the comprehensive plan. So thanks for the look ahead on that, Dr. Hale. Thank you to all the students. I'm not going to ask any of you to come up like Mr. Jones. But thanks for your presenting your arguments tonight or your debates. Good to hear from you and glad that you're in attendance at the meeting tonight, so. Let's see. Thanks to Ms. Mendez and Ms. Cummins, who by the way, thank you guys for speaking as well. Don't want to leave you guys out. Good topics you covered as well. A lot going on at the high school. I got an email from Dr. Shields. Homecoming week this week, so always exciting time there. They've got the dance coming up, they've got the band competition coming up on the 14th at Glenbar. The cheer team has a competition at Pulaski. October 18th, the freshmen are taking a field trip to University of Lynchburg and Randolph College. The 20th, they're having a community night at the football game and they're collecting canned food at the gate that night. So if you can bring a canned food down, that donation, that'll be appreciated. And Teachers for Tomorrow students are taking a field trip to Longwood University the week of October 24th. So busy month at the high school. Also got some feedback from Ms. Brown at Yellow Branch. So they had an appreciation, there was a custodial appreciation day and they showed appreciation to the custodial staff. Good idea there to appreciate those folks. They are key in the county to keeping all our facilities running and clean. So thank you to all those folks for their hard work. They had a welcome Teachers for Tomorrow group at RHS after fall break. So those students at RHS are coming to Yellow Branch to visit that week. And they also are recognizing 423 students who have missed two days or less. So that in addition to a lot of other attendance efforts I know are going on and hopefully we're making a positive impact there in getting better attendance at all of the area Campbell County schools. And lastly, they are having a parent-teacher organization trunk-or-treat on October 27th. Halloween's coming up, so they'll be doing that at Yellow Branch as well. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Ms. Parker?
Yes, of course, I'm just going to echo all the thanks instead of each one of us mentioning it to everybody specifically. Of course, I do have to say some to Ms. Knowles because she allows me to bug her and Ms. Hale to each year and see how we can keep improving on Constitution Day, super excited about that. And I've got to give a non-school board a shout out to my friend Claude Harris who brought Constitution Day to my attention through our mutual friend FJ Jalil, who's now on the city of Lynchburg School Board. And so they actually, without letting us know, decided that they were going to be competing with us this year to see who had the better Constitution Day. So I can't wait to see their presentation and maybe we can have a healthy competition moving forward and grow it in both locations. So thank you again. I also went to a bunch of the schools and got to sit in classrooms, including Mr. Scott's. So thank you also to Political Science Club for being here again tonight. Appreciate seeing you guys, thank you for being here. I was just blown away. So I'm in a senior class, government class, was it government class that I attended? And I remember barely getting through that class myself. And I can't, I might have to, I might lose the word, Aaron, on what you guys were talking about, the Bill of Rights. There was something you guys were challenging. I was just blown away, the kids that were, so many kids raised their hand and had the answers. And a great, active debate, and this is what, a few weeks into school? And I was just blown away. The students were great, I really appreciated it. The middle school, the kids did the Constitution Cube. And I'm telling you, the critical thinking part that everyone thinks isn't being taught, I don't know what they're thinking because I'm sitting there in middle school and the way they asked the children in sixth grade to figure out what one of our constitutional rights they felt most connected with and how it would apply, I had to sit there and figure out how I would put that into writing, you know? So I was, I was very impressed and the kids totally were engaged. I was really just impressed all the way around. So thank you to everybody there. Of course, Educational Foundation, just absolutely incredible. I shared with them a little bit earlier. One of the first complaints I got when I was on the board was that we shouldn't, that Campbell County Schools shouldn't be paying for kids to go to early college. Well, I didn't know how it worked. I'd had children in the program, but I called down to, front office was probably Clay because he was assistant super at the time, to learn that the Education Foundation is raising the money from local businesses to fund that program. So how amazing is that, you know, our community? And so I appreciate you guys doing it and I appreciate everybody whoever donates to that Education Foundation, it's amazing. Thanks for the student achievement update. Got to throw in a Parks and Rec thing. I have the Campbell County Activity Guides for the Fall out on the table outside, please take one. It's actually really pretty amazing, all of the different fun things that happen throughout the county, whether it's at our libraries or Parks and Rec, some really cool things, so please help yourselves to one. And I think that's all I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Brandt?
Where did I go? I better start with Campbell County Education. I know for a fact that those ladies and guys put a great amount of time in trying to raise the funds that they do. And I don't know where we would be without them. The job that you all have done is amazing, it's unbelievable. Constitution Day, Ms. Knowles, thank you so much for what you have done. Dr. Hale, Organizational Chart, we've been looking for that the last 30 years. So, Mr. Marky, your students did an excellent, excellent job. I'm glad to see all of the Brookville students here. And I believe we'd put those students up on anybody, Mr. Jones. And you all did a remarkable and great job. Also, if you're associated with Brookville High School, we do have an open house down tomorrow. I think it's going to start at 3:30. And I believe parent-teacher conferences around 5 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. So hopefully they can be well attended tomorrow. And leave anybody out, I hope not. It was just, this was a great meeting tonight and the students certainly inspired everybody, the last one of us. I can say that for myself, especially, they did an excellent job. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Mr. Maddox?
I too like to thank the Educational Foundation for the donations, especially because I want to get in my house tonight. And the students, y'all were amazing. Y'all brought up some good things and I'm sure we're going to look into some of them. And lastly, I want to give my time to Nick and Amy. Y'all want to tell about your truck-or-treat?
So on October 28th, we'll be back at Brookville High School for the special needs truck-or-treat. And we've got pretty much everything on Hawaii, which we're doing pretty well. Candy's expensive, so we will take any candy donations because we haven't priced candy here lately.
Go price it. So we're a little bit low on candy, so that's our big need right now. But we're good though, we had close to 500 come through. So I think we're going to be a little bit, probably around that amount or a little bit more. We also decided that we're going to give back as well. So foster fuels is coming to take and collect any gentle used or new coats. And then we also have Cravables, which is a new nonprofit that is seeking to provide jobs and job training for kids that don't fit in everybody's mold. And so they will be selling coffee, so we have coffee and hot chocolate. And so we're here that's going towards their nonprofit to be able to purchase a book. And we'll be able to use that because the important thing they want to be able to do is to go with local school divisions and have like the RSPR program and stuff, we'll be able to go over there and do stuff with them, so. Yes, so thank you very much. I would just see all of you there.
If you've never been, it's pretty amazing, especially if you like big trucks and cranes and, but the kids love it. And that starts at 8 o'clock?
At 9.
At 9? Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller?
Yeah, this is a fun night. And we got almost a full house here, which is really good. It really is. The Education Foundation continues to really put in a lot of work. But, but we don't get to personally thank the donors. And, and so I would just like that to be shared from, as a board. We appreciate your hard work, but we really appreciate the money. So just pass that on to the donors, how much we appreciate that. Ms. Knowles, all your work and effort on Constitution Day. And, you know, you know, part of our profiles of a student is citizenship. And it starts with this. And so, and we have, what do we have, a government class? Is it the same government class that was here before, last month? Same guys? Okay. We're glad you came back a second time. And that's what I said, stay engaged and be a participant. I mean, we need, we need active citizens. And so, and you guys on the debate team, excellent. And your topics well thought out. The only thing I want to, just constructive criticism for public speaking, slow down and eye contact.
Agreement.
Work on that. And so, but your topics well thought out, excellently presented. And I think it's real food for thought for us to, to look into, into those. I think you made an excellent argument. Really happy about our SOLs and our accreditation. I keep looking back pre-pandemic and where we are now, and we're creeping up, but we got a long way to go. And so we still have a lot of work ahead of us. But I'm glad that we're, we're neck, you know, we're where we should be representative with the state. So, you know, that, that's good. So, um, so in my schools, Brookfield Elementary School, I got to go down last Monday and Joy rocked the school, which was a huge success. All the kids were in the gymnasium. They had William Campbell Pet Band, and they had the cheerleaders there. They had a decibel meter to see how loud we could rock the school. And it was excellent. It was a combined assembly and PTO, and it was really, really good. And then William Campbell just got to go there and spend some time with Ms. Hanson. And things are going well. We're still struggling with absenteeism down there. You know, you said it's doing better, but we're struggling down there. So, and when we talk about parent involvement, I want parent involvement. Get their kids to school. So anyway, but William Campbell Golf Team won the regionals and are going to go to state. So that's good.
Right.
And I think that's all I got.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'm not going to go in detail on everything. I'll just, I will say ditto to everything and all the compliments and appreciations. But I will, a couple of things I want to mention, and that's, again, I see firsthand how much work goes into the Campbell County Educational Foundation and raising funds. And, you know, it's, it's amazing in itself that we've raised a hundred and fifty thousand. Our, the Educational Foundation has raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to date. But what's even more amazing, and Rose, you can tell, you can, you know this better than I do, but we have one part-time person. And how many hours?
A volunteer board.
Exactly. And, and the part-time person, how many hours? I mean, it's not a lot. Few hours a month really, right? But I think it's just amazing when you look at, that's a volunteer board. All of the hard work that goes into that is all volunteer effort. And to raise that kind of money in this short length of, you know, time of existence, I think is amazing. So thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President for that. The next thing I would like to mention, and I don't think anybody mentioned it, so I may have one thing that you guys didn't think about or didn't say. The Brookville High School band. They finished first at the Lynchburg Classic. Yay, here we go. First place, color guard, percussion, music, visual, marching, general effect, drum major, first in class for a clean sweep. So kudos to the Brookville High School band. And you were grand champions, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's been a long time. Grand champions of the city classics. Big honor.
Absolutely. That is super, so great job there.
Good job.
Just going back again, the Constitution Day. I am looking forward to next year. To, I know Ann spoke of competition with the city. I'm looking forward to seeing what you do to outdo yourself. But it was great. I mean, and a great presentation as to what went on as well. Achievement Strategic Planning goes back to what Dr. Miller said, the SOLs and the accreditation. I mean, these are great achievements. We're moving in the right direction. And hats off to everybody and all the hard work in making that happen. And the two percent raise, I like that. That's great. I know, you know, everybody would like more, but it sure is nice to hear that we're planning a two percent raise. So thank you, thank the staff, everyone for working hard to work in the numbers. So hopefully we can make that happen. So other than that, I don't have anything else. Is there anything else anyone needs to discuss or any questions? Well, at this time, I understand we have a need for a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion to take us into closed session.
Ms. Chairman, I'm moved that we convene in a closed meeting for discussion of considerations of dismembered matters or other matters that were involved in discussions, disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record concerning a student in the school division, specifically students number twenty-eight and twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight, two of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One comment. Mr. Marky, you did well on your presentation as well. You did a good job. We didn't want to leave you out. No, everybody did a great job again. Thank you, guys. The Political Science Class, Mr. Scott, thank you, guys. That was great.
Five-minute recess.
Let's take a five-minute recess and get started.
At this time, I'd ask for a motion certified to the best of each member's knowledge that during our closed meeting only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
No move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Brandt, a second by Mr. Maddox. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the administration's recommendations on student number twenty-eight as amended. And on student number twenty-nine, I move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Do we have any other business matters to discuss?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion by Mr. Dr. Miller to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maddox. Any further discussion? I'm sorry. Mr. Brandt, Mr. Brandt, sorry.
Man, that's a low blow there.
Sorry about that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.